Forty-fifth regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Today is May 16th. We will begin tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman McIntyre.
Thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman McIntyre. So again, welcome to tonight's regular meeting. Tonight will be a voting meeting. We will start the meeting by Clerk Nash taking the roll call.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have all members of the council present this evening. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the minutes of the 1,944th regular meeting of May 2nd, 2022.
So move.
Support. Motion by McCullough, support by Barr. Anybody have anything to say, comments, additions? I see none from the council. Any comments or additions from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes pass. At this time, I believe we also need a motion for the minutes of the special meeting that was held. And I believe the date of that special meeting was...
May 4th.
May 4th.
May 4th. Can I have a motion for that at this time?
I will move approval.
Support.
Motion by McIntyre, support by Donovan. Any comments or additions from the council or the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on that as well?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes for the May 4th meeting, the special meeting, pass as well. At this time, I would like to invite Chief Goralski from the Livonia Police Department to come to the podium. He has some exciting and some very valuable news for our community. Chief?
Good evening, Council President Jolly, and good evening, council members. It is an exciting night, tonight, for the Livonia Police Department. We have with us here tonight the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, retired Livonia Chief Bob Stevenson, who would like to do a little presentation, if the council would allow it. Thank you.
Please, chief.
Evening, Council President, council members, city officials, public here in Livonia that's here in person, those are watching remotely. My name is Robert Stevenson, and I am proud to say that I did spend 37 years of my life here in the city of Livonia, employed, and left as your Chief of Police. Then I went on to the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, where I'm currently the Executive Director. I come here tonight representing the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission to award the certificate of reaccreditation to the Livonia Police Department. One of the things that I've been allowed to do over the last 10 years is go around the state and deal with a lot of different police departments and see how police departments can operate. And I knew that we had a good and excellent police department when I left here, but that's been reaffirmed in the last 10 years, is I've gone around the state and seen how police departments operate and what they do. And I think sometimes we don't recognize the excellence that we have here because we're right in the center of it. Sometimes we hear the noise that's out there, maybe makes us wonder a little bit about our police department. It's been no secret that the last couple of years have been extremely trying times for law enforcement with what has happened around the country, and a lot of calls of so-called police reforms that they want police departments to undertake. And I'm proud to say, for your department, all of those reforms that you hear that are called for, your department has already done. And they did it not since the calls for reforms came about, but your department did it previous to that. You originally got accredited in 2019, quite an accomplishment then, and reaccreditation is also an accomplishment. To put this in a little bit more perspective, in the state of Michigan, there's 600 police agencies. Out of those 600 police agencies, 400 of them are municipal police agencies. Of those 400 police agencies that are municipal, we currently have 42 that are accredited in the state of Michigan. Of those 42 that are accredited, yours is the ninth to attain reaccreditation. So I put this in a different way. Your police department has been able to do what over 95% of the other police agencies in the state of Michigan have not been able to do. It's quite an accomplishment. You should be proud of it. I'm extremely proud of your city, of your police department, of the police leadership, and the men and women of the Livonia Police Department. So when I started my little spiel here, I said, "I'm here, and we're going to award the certificate of reaccreditation." We don't give these out. You have to earn them, and they're a lot of work. And I'm going to introduce our program manager, Neil Rosso, a retired chief from Flat Rock, to talk a little bit about the process. Neil?
Thanks, Bob. Council President, and you all that are here, truly honored to be here. I always say I got to do a lot of pretty cool stuff in almost 40 years of policing, but the neatest thing I've been able to do is come into a community and tell them they have a great police department. So you're all somewhat familiar with accreditation because your kids go to accredited schools and accredited hospitals and accredited colleges. So what happens in accreditation is a commission that's close to the organization or to the profession creates standards. There's 108 standards that they had to meet. Hidden within those 108 standards are about 450 or 460 things they have to do. So they were accredited three years ago, and that's kind of a promise made. And the real challenge to accreditation is keeping those files and those proofs and those standards up. So like Bob said, they're the ninth department to get reaccredited. We've actually had some people that had problems with their reaccreditation, so it's a big deal. They have to take those 108 standards. They had to write written directives to meet those standards. Then they had to create a thing that we call proofs to show the two outsiders that came in as assessors from the commission, to show that they're following the directives that follow the standard. So it's my honor to be here. I'm going to turn you over to the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police President, Ron Wiles, from Grand Blank Township.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. It is certainly my pleasure and honor to be here and recognize your police department for the great work that they've done. As mentioned, my name is Ron Wiles. I'm the Chief of Police at Grand Blank Township up in Genesee County and the current President of the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police. I can tell you firsthand the amount of time, effort, and commitment it takes to attain accreditation. As Neil mentioned, your original accreditation, three years ago, that's a promise made. Promise made to the staff here at Livonia Police Department, promise made to you as a council member, and a promise made to the community. They have kept their promise. Three years later, a group of assessors come in, and they abide by all the standards of accreditation, all 108 standards and some 400 tasks that are associated with that. Something to be very proud of. As Bob mentioned, we don't give these out. They have to be earned, and your police department certainly earned it. Make your police department and your community safer and stronger. You should be very proud. So chief, if you'll please join me.
While you see the certificate, know that the Livonia Police Department, having voluntarily complied with the standards established by the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, deemed essential for the delivery of professional police services and the protection of their community, is hereby awarded the certificate of accreditation effective this date for good for a term of three years. Chief, congratulations.
So thank you, chief. Thank you, director, and thank you, Director of the accreditation program, Neil Rosso. It is a big deal, and this was accomplished not by me, but the entire police department. And specifically, I'd like to make a couple of thank yous to the accreditation team that worked so diligently over the last several years, because once you get accredited in 2019, like they said, it's a promise made, but we have to keep that promise. And we've been working at it for three straight years. And I'd like to specifically thank the team, which consisted of Lieutenant Steve Pesh, if you could stand real quick, Sergeant Stacy Hane, and Detective Cam Cost. Thank you for your efforts. And I'd also like to thank my command staff who are here tonight, Deputy Chief Ben McDermott and Captain Greg Yon, who helps to steer the boat in the direction it needs to go, which is to protect the community of Livonia. And finally, or not finally, but I'd also like to thank always the elected officials in this city that consistently and constantly support public safety for our citizens. This is a big accomplishment. We're very proud of it, but more importantly, we're proud to serve the citizens of the city of Livonia. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, chief.
May we get a photo, everyone?
Of course, chief.
Thank you.
How long do you have? If you'd like one.
Thank you. I can't get from here. No. Cam, I'll do it. That's all right. For not to... Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Don't drop it off. Yeah, I could go wrong with this picture. Can you guys just... Is this ready? Sounds like you want it. One more. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So that is a well-deserved recognition. I don't think anybody in this room quite needs a certificate to tell us how great our police department is and how great the professionals who protect and serve our community every day are, but it's great to have that. Chief Stevenson, thank you for coming, and to all of your colleagues as well. We appreciate the commendation. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilman Barr to make a special presentation that comes from the Livonia City Council to honor someone who's very special to all of us, somebody who's special to our community. And Mr. Barr will provide some of the details, but this is from all of us here on council specifically.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I have only part of my voice tonight, but when I was offered the chance to read this, I took it because Josie Smith is certainly special to each one of us. Josie, we've got a commendation from the offices of the mayor and the city council, whereas in honor of Josephine Josie Smith, a resident for over 64 years and leading citizen of the city of Livonia, we hereby proclaim May 20th, 2022, as Josie Smith Day at City Hall. Whereas Josie gave 21 years of dedicated service to the Livonia Aging Commission. And whereas Josie has been known by many informal titles, including Mayor of the Senior Citizens, Mayor of Silver Village, and Mrs. Livonia, but the title used most often by those who know her is friend. And whereas Josie's volunteer work spanning seven decades have touched thousands of lives, beginning with her time as a Girl Scout leader when her daughters were young and continuing to this day. She's serving in many capacities, including distributing food to those in need, supporting the campaigns of many elected leaders, leading many activities at Silver Village, and generously contributing her time and many talents to the Civic Park Senior Center. Whereas Josie's love for and dedication to Livonia makes her one of the city's leading residents, who is loved by many, who admire her contributions, tenacity, generosity, optimism, and wonderful sense of humor, and recognize her as a Livonia treasure. And now therefore, I, Maureen Miller-Brosnan, Mayor of the city of Livonia, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, do hereby take this opportunity to join with the Livonia City Council to declare Friday, May 20th, 2022, as Josie Smith Day at Livonia City Hall, and commend her dedicated efforts to the benefit of the city and its citizens. And then in witness thereof, I hereby do set my hand and cause the seal of the office of the mayor to be affixed this 16th day of May 2022, signed by the mayor and the council. Congratulations, Josie.
Can you hear me? I do have a loud voice. I really appreciate it, but it seems so funny that I get honored for what I love to do and all the people in Livonia. I have made so many friends. Thank you very much.
I want to give everybody on council an opportunity, if they want to say anything directly to Ms. Smith.
Yes, Josie, this is Scott Morgan. I just wanted to say thank you for your dedication to all the things that you've done in our community for all those years and your support of the city of Livonia. It's really appreciated, and it will never be forgotten. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, honestly, of all the years of service that you've done for the community. How many presidents and mayors you've been a part of over the years? It's been incredible. Again, from the bottom of our hearts on council, it's been a pleasure, and thank you so much for everything.
As the commendation said, you're a treasure to the city, and you're treasured to everyone who knows you, and my husband finally got that dinner.
Thank you, friend.
Scott?
Yeah, Josie, I was just thinking, I've got a picture from the first time that I ran with you in May, and my daughter Macy and I, our mutual friend Jack Kirksey introduced us, and ever since then, I've just been really touched by your warmth and just your encouragement, whether I see you walking into the REC Center or whether I see you at the Senior Center. Just thanks for all of your service to the city. It's much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. President. A while back, when I decided to run, my colleagues Kathleen McIntyre and Laura Toy said, "All right, Rob, if you're going to run for city council, you need to meet this lady named Josie." And it's all what you did at the Senior Center and all the activities you participate and lead and how involved you are in the community. And it's really truly an honor to know you and see what you've done for this community. And I'm a young guy, so I'll be saying your name for a lot of years from here, all right? So thank you and congratulations.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Josie and your daughters sitting next to you, nice to see you as well. Thank you for all the many, many years. You haven't changed a bit, and you've certainly been a friend to so many. And not only that, I remember when you worked at our store and helped us out at Cardwell Forest. And appreciate that. And hopefully, you got your paychecks. So you are a true example of what seniors mean and continue to mean in our city by being active, remaining active, and doing a lot for others. So thank you very much.
Thank you, dear.
Before we go to Mr. Jolly, I want to say one other thing. And Josie has passed this legacy of caring and service along, and now when you're at the Senior Center for their events, Natalie is Josie there volunteering, her daughter Bridgette is there as well. So it's a legacy that she's passed along to everyone in her family. So thank you too, Bridgette.
Thanks.
Ms. Smith, this is, there's many things that we do here on council, and I think we take them all to heart, but this is one that I think gives us all special joy and pride here to kind of be able to honor you for just a moment. All the titles that Scott read off, I mean, we could add so many more. You're the grandmother of Livonia, you're the voice of the senior citizens in this community, and I as well. I mean, I think my first campaign thing I ever did was handing out donuts with you at the Senior Center, and you told me exactly how I should think about certain things and the perspective that was important to the senior citizens. And I value that, and I know we all value that. And we can never thank you enough, so just know from the bottom of our hearts that you're special to us, and you're special to this community, and you always will be. Thank you. We would also love to have a picture with you if we could.
I want a picture. Bridgette, Bridgette too. I know, but we want you in the picture. Did they color coordinate on purpose? Are they getting me out? Bridgette?
I'll picture.
Josie, you're going to come to the picture. I don't know if this needs to be turned on.
I might just say hello to my friend there.
Did you mention your time working in Washington? They lack something. I know, where we live, we have to work on the page. Of course, everyone. Here, Bridgette. The question is, did you color coordinate before you came up?
Just say...
Thanks.
Are you going to come? 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 Are you going to come?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Preston Peterson. I represent the House District, Representative Jill Jones. Actually, I was going to talk a little bit about what happened in the House last week, but I think it pales in terms of some of the exciting things that you announced today. And I want to congratulate the Livonia Police Department on this reaccreditation. I think it's fantastic. It speaks well of the city and the dedication of your officers. In addition to Smith, of course, for her work in the city, I think that's great that you have citizens of her caliber to, you know, not only participate in civic activities, but to promote good politicians. It sounds like several of you benefited from our services. So with that, I'm going to sort of, you know, forget about politics for tonight. Excuse me. And wish you well.
Thank you, sir. We always appreciate our elected officials and their representatives coming to our meeting. It takes an effort to do that, so thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely.
Anybody else who'd like to address the council, please come up at this time? Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Yes, Ishmael Terry. Good evening to all of you. Hope you guys got our newsletter today. Wanted to introduce myself. My name is Ishmael Terry, and I'll be running for state representative in the 16th district, which covers Five Mile Road and Farmington Road is, Five Mile and Farmington Road is the cutoff point in the boundary. We're going to be hosting a meet and greet at the Hand Dip. I will be sending that out when we do have the meeting greet, and we would love to invite all of you to there. We had our first meet and greet at the Donut Town in Reford Charter Township, and we had at least about 80 to 100 people show up. So we're looking to double that here in Livonia. We look forward to you guys participating and actually talking to us about what is it that you need. My skill set, as most of you probably don't know or do know, is that I've been in this for 26, 27 years. And so I can provide you with that assessment and investment opportunities and resources that you may need to utilize the state. It's not just a official-to-official, but an opportunity to talk about things that's sustainable and things that what you will need instead of what you want. So I appreciate you guys bringing me along and having me opportunity, and I'm here with my chief of staff, Darren Flowers. We also run a nonprofit 501(c)(3) agency too, and we're actually getting ready to move our agency into New York and Los Angeles and Chicago. So we're going to be very busy, but I told them, "They can run the ship, and I'll be the stakeholder." Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. So is that you're buying ice cream for everybody who comes out to this thing?
Man, if you come, we got you. If you don't come, you don't get nothing.
I mean, I'm sure that would get you a good crowd.
I tell you, I got you. I'll make sure everyone in here eat ice cream. I promise.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, if there is no further audience communication, I will...
I'm sorry, did you say council announcement?
Not yet, Ms. Toy.
Pardon me.
So at this time, I will move to council announcements, and it sounds like Ms. Toy is primed to say something. So Ms. Toy?
I am. I think that unless somebody else was going to do this, we had a death of one of our former police chiefs, Chief Grieve, who served and was very popular amongst the men and women of the Livonia Police Department, did an awesome job for many years here and served his city well. I don't know if Scott Morgan was on then when Chief Grieve was here, but I've heard a lot of good things about him, and he is supposed to be over at the Harry Will Funeral Home. I'm not sure all those arrangements have been made there on Six Mile, but I did want to ask Mr. President that we have a few moments of silence for and honor our former chief of police.
Of course, Ms. Toy. If we could all bow our heads for a moment?
Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Mr. Barr?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
President Jolly? Aye, the consent agenda passes, we will move on to unfinished business, this is item number eight, a roll call vote for a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances from the Department of Law to add Chapter ninety-eight, the City of Livonia Police and Fire Revised Retirement Plan to Title Two. A first reading was given on this matter on May second of 2022 by Councilmember McIntyre.
I would like to offer a second read.
Okay, we have a second reading, is there any comments from the council on this matter? I see none, any comment from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, number twelve is approved. We'll move on to thirteen, this is a very similar item, a request to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from sole source provider from Department of Parks and Rec to replace fitness equipment with pre-core fitness equipment from budgeted funds, council, can I have a motion?
Support, er, yes.
I'll support this place, motion.
Ms. Toy?
Sorry.
Is gonna go down as the motion maker, Mr. Barr as the supporter. Are there any questions or comments in regards to this matter from the council? I see none, any audience communication on this matter? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on number thirteen?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, number twelve is approved, and that will take effect upon publication in the newspaper. Item number nine is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance, coming to us as a request from Randy Keats of Shake Shack Michigan LLC to host a car show with a DJ in the parking lot at three-nine-three-zero-zero West Seven Mile Road every Monday until October, beginning Monday, May twenty-third, from four to eight PM. Is Mr. Keats in the audience?
I am here on behalf of Mr. Keats.
Okay, please, join us at the podium and tell us your name and address, please, and...
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Amanda, Shake Shack, three-nine-three-zero-zero, West Seven Mile Road, I am the Assistant General Manager for the location, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so, um...
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving.
I'll support it.
Okay, motion to approve by Donavick, support by Toy, anybody from the council? I see none, any audience comments on this matter? I see none. I'll just add very quickly, you are a relatively new operation in the city, the reason why you had to come tonight is typically we want to have a face to go along with these kind of requests to the city, it's important when you have some kind of business coming before the city, that somebody shows up, so not only that we can have an opportunity to ask you questions, in this case, it's, it's kind of a, it's a win-win for the community and for your business as well, right?
Yeah.
But if questions were to come up, we would want somebody here able to answer them.
Of course.
So in the future, had you come to the first meeting, you probably wouldn't have had to come to this meeting, okay? But we're gonna take the vote here in a second.
I do have one question.
Mr. Barr?
Sorry, I missed your call for earlier, is this something consistent with, do all Shake Shacks do this kind of thing, or is this unique to our Livonia location?
Um, this is gonna be unique to this location, there's not a car show at any other Shake Shacks in Michigan that I'm aware of, not to say that, you know, in different parts of the country, that wouldn't be a thing, but it's just something to help us revenue, generate some revenue on Mondays, it's a super slow day, we're thinking like probably ten to thirty people are gonna probably show up for it, nothing too crazy.
So, yeah, and I, I don't mind voting to approve this, I will say, it gave me a little bit of pause, I was, I was going through our study agenda from before, I was like, did that say through, every Monday through October, because I somehow missed that piece? That gives me a little bit of pause with it just being a new business and, and approving this for every week, I will approve, I will vote to approve just because of the location of this, I don't anticipate it being a high-risk thing for residents or anything like that from a noise standpoint, but we'll definitely watch it for future years to see how this goes, so.
For sure, Randy's a big car guy, that's his passion, so this is really his baby, he's just out of, out of state right now, so, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President, I was excited about this, I, I understand my colleague, Councilman Scott Barr's potential issue with, with that, and it is a rather long time, but I thought about a few other locations in the city that I know that do car shows throughout the, throughout the summer, summer months, and to your point, I imagine Mondays are kind of slow for your guys' establishment, and I do imagine that if it became so busy with cars, that you may not want to do car shows moving forward, so I know there's a couple other venues in town that are restaurant-themed or, or halls of that sort that do fundraisers or, or, you know, car shows, whatever, maybe, and I think this would be a pretty good idea to draw some attention to the new Shake Shack and, and get some future customers, so I think it's a great idea, and I will be looking forward to seeing some nice cars and eating a good burger, I hope you come see us. Yeah, I hope you come see us.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you, or Council President, if I may to Amanda through the chair, Amanda, where will the show be concentrated, towards the back of your lot?
Yep, so it's a, it's a pretty decent-sized lot, and there's a bank that's being built, so it'd be by the bank side, we would have signs to delegate, like where to, where to park, depending if you're just coming in or if you're a part of the show, and obviously if you're going through the drive-through.
Sure, and how's business, sir?
Uh, so far, it's been great, the, the community's been great to us, we really appreciate that, and, yeah, I mean, we're just trying to figure out creative ways to get, you know, some foot traffic in on the slower days, we can get our team some more hours and things like that.
Sure, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope this brings you much success.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I called audience communication once before, but any audience communication? There is none, Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on this?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, item number nine passes, we will move on to item number ten, this is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition two-zero-two-two-zero-two-zero-two-four, submitted by Shake Shack Michigan LLC requesting to utilize an SDM liquor license, allowing for the sale of packaged beer and wine products for consumption off the premises in conjunction
of events coming up this summer, which I hope we'll be able to post on the city website. There's some social events for the community and also a social event coming up. And they have three, they'll have three separate ones for teens, tweens, and adults who are dealing with cognitive challenges. But they did just a super job, and it was nice to see so many people from the community out there. The other thing is, and I don't, I know, we don't have anyone directly from the administration here tonight, but I just wanted to mention. I had a question from folks on Fairway Street between Five Mile and Linden, asking about why there are so many, they see so many city vehicles going in both directions. And then the other thing is, and this is really to residents, too, there are some blighted properties in Livonia that are in violation right now of the ordinance for the height of grass. And I'm going, we are working to make sure those are on everyone's radar screen, but we have had a very difficult time getting seasonal help this summer. The applications that we generally get for young people and college students are not coming. So if you live near one of those properties where we are able to show up and cut the grass because of the ordinance violations, we just ask you to understand that we're aware and that, like many organizations, public and private, we're having a difficult time with staffing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. I would just add to that. It's always worthy of a phone call to make sure that these houses are on the city's radar, though.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Ms. Toy?
I'm sorry. I wanted to remind us, or all of us, and all of us are probably aware, I'll be at a wedding that weekend, but on the twenty-eighth, we have that Memorial Day service at The Rock. And I'm not sure of all the particulars. Usually, it starts around nine o'clock, and that was the year, remember, Jim, we were running, and you tripped me? And, no, I'm teasing. But I'm only joking with you. But, no, it's a very nice ceremony for our veterans and all their families. So if anybody else has any more information on that, I know Parks and Rec Ted's here, so maybe he knows a lot more than I do. But I wanted to make sure the residents knew about it, sir. Yes.
Thank you for the reminder. That's a very special day for us here in Livonia to honor our veterans and those we have lost. At this time, we are joined with our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Ted Davis, our City Engineer, Todd Zalinsik, City Attorney, Paul Bernier, City Clerk, Susan Nash, Developer of Economic Development and Planning, Mark Tormina, Manager of the City Council Office, Sarah Kaspwitz. These are the professionals who help us to look smart during the meeting and do a lot of the important work during the week. So we're happy to have them here with us tonight. We have new data on items ten, twelve, and thirteen. We'll discuss that as we move into those agenda items. At this time, we will move to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. The consent agenda is a group, in this case, seven items that have been previously studied during the study meeting and found to be non-controversial, found to be not requiring further study of the council, and they are voted on as one meeting, or one meeting item, one vote. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Submove, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Support by Toy, excuse me, motion by Toy, support by Barr. Anybody from the audience have anything to say about the consent agenda? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on that?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We will move on to unfinished business. This is item number eight, a roll call vote for a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances from the Department of Law to add Chapter ninety-eight, the City of Livonia Police and Fire Revised Retirement Plan to Title Two. A first reading was given on this matter on May second of 2022 by Councilmember McIntyre.
I would like to offer a second read.
Okay, we have a second reading. Is there any comments from the council on this matter? I see none. Any comment from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter is passed, and that will take effect upon publication in the newspaper. Item number nine is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance, coming to us as a request from Randy Keats of Shake Shack Michigan LLC to host a car show with a DJ in the parking lot at 39300 West Seven Mile Road every Monday until October, beginning Monday, May twenty-third, from four to eight PM. Is Mr. Keats in the audience?
I am here on behalf of Mr. Keats.
Okay, please join us at the podium and tell us your name and address, please, and... Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amanda, Shake Shack, 39300 West Seven Mile Road. I am the Assistant General Manager for the location. Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so...
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving.
I'll support it.
Okay, motion to approve by Donavich, support by Toy. Anybody from the council? I see none. Any audience comment on this matter? I see none. I'll just add very quickly. You are a relatively new operation in the city. The reason why you had to come tonight is typically we want to have a face to go along with these kind of requests to the city. It's important when you have some kind of business coming before the city that somebody shows up. So not only that we can have an opportunity to ask you questions, in this case, it's kind of a, it's a win-win for the community and for your business as well, right?
Yeah.
But if questions were to come up, we would want somebody here able to answer them.
Of course.
So in the future, had you come to the first meeting, you probably wouldn't have had to come to this meeting, okay? But we're going to take the vote here in a second.
I do have one question.
Mr. Barr?
Sorry, I missed your call for earlier. Is this something consistent with, do all Shake Shacks do this kind of thing, or is this unique to our Livonia location?
This is going to be unique to this location. There's not a car show at any other Shake Shacks in Michigan that I'm aware of. Not to say that, you know, in different parts of the country, that wouldn't be a thing, but it's just something to help us generate some revenue on Mondays. It's a super slow day. We're thinking, like, probably ten to thirty people are going to probably show up for it. Nothing too crazy.
So, yeah, and I don't mind voting to approve this. I will say, it gave me a little bit of pause. I was going through our study agenda from before. I was like, did it say through, every Monday through October? Because I somehow missed that piece. That gives me a little bit of pause with it just being a new business and approving this for every week. I will approve, I will vote to approve just because of the location of this. I don't anticipate it being a high-risk thing for residents or anything like that from a noise standpoint, but we'll definitely watch it for future years to see how this goes. So...
For sure. Randy's a big car guy. That's his passion. So this is really his baby. He's just out of state right now. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was excited about this. I understand my colleague, Councilman Scott Barr's potential issue with that, and it is a rather long time. But I thought about a few other locations in the city that I know that do car shows throughout the, throughout the summer, summer months. And to your point, I imagine Mondays are kind of slow for you guys' establishment. And I do imagine that if it became so busy with cars that you may not want to do car shows moving forward. So I know there's a couple other venues in town that are restaurant-themed or halls of that sort that do fundraisers or, you know, car shows, whatever, maybe. And I think this would be a pretty good idea to draw some attention to the new Shake Shack and get some future customers. So I think it's a great idea, and I will be looking forward to seeing some nice cars and eating a good burger. Thank you.
I hope you come see us.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you, Council President. If I made it to Amanda through the chair, Amanda, where will the show be concentrated? Towards the back of your lot?
Yep. So it's a, it's a pretty decent-sized lot, and there's a bank that's being built, so it'd be by the bank side. We would have signs to delegate, like, where to park, depending if you're just coming in or if you're part of the show, and obviously, if you're going through the drive-thru.
Sure. And how's business there?
So far, it's been great. The community's been great to us. We really appreciate that. And, yeah, I mean, we're just trying to figure out creative ways to get, you know, some foot traffic in on the slower days, so we can get our team some more hours and things like that.
Sure. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope this brings you much success.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I called audience communication once before, but any audience communication? There is none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on this?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item number nine passes. We will move on to item number ten. This is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2022-020204, submitted by Shake Shack Michigan LLC requesting to utilize an SDM liquor license, allowing for the sale of packaged beer and wine products for consumption off the premises in conjunction with the operation of a Class C liquor license, the sale of beer and wine and spirits for consumption on the premises. This was previously approved for the subject property pursuant to Council Resolution 228-93 in connection with the operation with a freestanding full-service Shake Shack at 39300 Seven Mile Road Northwest, excuse me, northeast corner of Seven Mile Road in Hagerty in the southwest quarter of Section Number Six. We have new data on this item. I think that new data is information regarding Shake Shack's alcohol sales in the state of Michigan and lack of violations, I think, is what that shows. Can I get a motion on this, council?
I'll offer an approving.
We have an approving by Mr. McCullough.
I'll support it for sake of discussion.
We have support from Ms. Toy. Does council have anything to say about this matter?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
I have a question for the petitioner.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, sir, for being here. I was looking at your new data. Thanks for providing that. I'm okay with this. I think this isn't, your establishment isn't a bar. It's not selling a large amount of alcohol. I think this is just something to complement maybe a burger when they're eating something. And I know other restaurants I've been to in other communities similar to Livonia that have similar franchise styles and have a bottle of beer or something like that to go. I'm not worried about selling to minors, so to speak. I don't think that's an issue. I don't think that happens. So I think this will just be something that'll be a nice addition to your guys' location. I do have one question about the new data. It says acceptable forms of identification, and the only issue I have is a valid Armed Forces Identification Card containing the holder's photograph. Identification card, the military identification card, doesn't have a date of birth on there. So my only worry is that there are soldiers that can be below the age of twenty-one that may be able to show a military ID card, and it doesn't have their date of birth on there. So that's just something food for thought for maybe you and your organization to think about moving forward. But with the exception of that, I'm completely fine with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before I forget, can you identify yourself, council?
Sure. Thank you, President Jolly. Patrick Howe, local council for Shake Shack Michigan LLC.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Chair?
Vice President Toy?
I didn't get to see the new data, and that's my fault. But do we have any other Shake Shacks in Michigan that have liquor licenses? Do we know offhand?
There's four. Yep. So there's Rochester Hills, which recently opened and has a liquor license, Troy, which was just behind that, Ann Arbor, and Detroit. They all have on-premise, which we're approved for here under the waiver use, and we're asking to amend that waiver use to allow beer and wine to go.
To go?
To go.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments or questions from the council? I see none. We will go to the audience. Does anybody in the audience have any comments or questions in regards to this matter? I see none. As the petitioner, would you like to address us with any pertinent facts or information?
Certainly. After the study session, I went back and asked for the corporate policy related to service of alcohol. I provided that to council. Also summarized their violation history since locating Michigan, which shows a perfectly clean record. I also have Assistant General Manager Amanda here to answer any questions regarding process, policy. I know there's a concern about how to, what, you know, this doesn't function like traditional restaurant. How do we make sure that minors aren't being served? That is actually bullet point number two on their policy, national policy, to make sure they don't serve to any adults that others that might think are serving to minors. So it's of utmost importance to them nationally. They have a great record in Michigan. And again, this beer-winded-to-go is sort of a modern take on today's restaurant, and it's just going to be a compliment to the great thing they have going here in Livonia. So Amanda, myself, happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I see no comments or questions from the council. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item ten passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2022-030207, submitted by Clover Self-Storage, requesting to operate a truck and trailer rental business in conjunction with the existing climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility at 28900 Schoolcraft Road, located on the north side of Schoolcraft Road between Inkster and Middlebelt Roads in the southwest quarter of Section Twenty-four. Can I have a motion, council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
I'll offer an approving.
Support. Approving from Donavich, support from Vice President Toy. Anybody on the council want to address this? I...
Oh, no.
We'll go to the petitioner to start. Please identify yourself.
Anthony Cadilly, Clover Self-Storage.
Yes, sir. What would you like to tell us tonight?
We're looking for approval to be able to keep the U-Hauls, to be able to have the rent U-Hauls at the storage building.
Okay. Any questions or comments, council? I see none.
May I ask a real quick question? What, if to the petitioner through the president, that's all right. Sir, how much does this constitute part of your business? What percentage would you guess?
We, I would say maybe two to three percent of it.
Okay.
Maybe as high as five percent?
I'm not having a problem with it. I just wondered, you know, offhand, what that does.
Between two and five percent.
Two to five? Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any audience communication? I see none. Ms. Toy, or, excuse me, Ms. Nash. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item eleven is approved. We'll move on to item number twelve. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from the sole source provider, coming to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation to replace fitness equipment with octane fitness equipment from budgeted funds. We have new data on this item as well regarding pricing and surcharge information. Mr. Davis?
Mr. President?
Welcome. Can we get a motion from the council?
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Approving from McCullough, support from Mr. Barr. We'll go to Mr. Davis.
Oh, I was just going to mention Memorial Day ceremony on Saturday, May twenty-eighth. That's at nine AM at Veterans Memorial Plaza. We're very thankful this year. We actually have, in no small part, thanks to Councilman Barr, we're going to have Mission Barbecue Box lunches for people, which hopefully they'll bring Blueberry Cobbler, because that was still the best dessert I've had, and everyone should trust me on that one. So I hope I answered Councilwoman Toy's question on Memorial Day. As for the fitness equipment, we did provide additional data. I mean, the, the actual pricing for the pre-core equipment, is that the first one we're dealing with? No, I'm sorry, the octane. The octane, they did mention the surcharge, and that was directly tied to their shipping cost increasing. I would have preferred that they simply factored that into the total price opposed to a surcharge line, but that is what they're currently doing. I'm happy to answer any additional questions council might have on this.
Mr. Barr?
Following, so I'm the one that asked a lot of questions at the last meeting and just doing some quick Google searching, was questioning these prices because they seemed to be exorbitant to me based on what I was seeing. I just want the public to know, shortly after that meeting, I noticed a really critical mistake in my analysis, and that was not seeing the two in the quantity column on that, on the sheet that we had, and that I was actually looking at the price for two instead of one. Had I seen that, I would not have had any questions. I can see that these prices are fine. I did contact Mr. Davis shortly after that meeting to apologize to him for not seeing that, and I promised him that I would make that right at this meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Davis. When you, when you came up with the Memorial Day stuff, I thought, because I think Mr. McCullough had some questions about that, too, if I remember right, and I thought, oh, this is a seasoned council presenter here. Here's McCullough give the approving, Barr give the support, and he's like, oh, I got this. I better just tell him something else. So anyway, thanks, Mr. Davis. Appreciate it.
Anybody else on the council? Anybody for the audience? Audience communication? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on number twelve?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Number twelve is approved.
Thank you.
We'll move on to thirteen. This is a very similar item, request to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from sole source provider from Department of Parks and Rec to replace fitness equipment with pre-core fitness equipment from budgeted funds. Council, can I have a motion?
Support.
Yes.
I'll support this one.
Ms. Toy?
Sorry.
Is going to go down as the motion maker, Mr. Barr as the supporter. Are there any questions or comments in regards to this matter from the council? I see none. Any audience communication on this matter? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on number thirteen?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Thirteen is approved. I'll note that there is also new data on that matter. And I have a quick comment. Mr. Davis, as our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, should you be encouraging people to eat dessert to begin with, let alone?
Well, they could eat the dessert, and then they can come to the REC Center and work it off. But I would highly recommend the dessert first and foremost. And if you have... Councilman Barr is smiling because he knows it was, I don't even like blueberries, and I'm going to tell you, I just told someone there today, I'm like, you got to go get Blueberry Cobbler from there. And they're like, really? And I trust me on that.
Well, it has Mr. Davis's...
I'm happy to answer any questions, other questions you might have.
About the Blueberry Cobbler.
You know what? I think we're all set on that.
Thank you.
So with that item passing, that concludes our scheduled agenda for this evening's regular meeting. At this time, I'll go back to the council for any last-minute announcements. I don't see any. Do we have any audience communication? I see no audience communication at this time as well.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion to adjourn from Toy, support from McCullough. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on that?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?[1777.34]